All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order our Isla Meadow School Committee meeting. It's December 1st, 2014, 7:00 PM. Can't believe I'm saying December 1st already. Welcome back. And this meeting is being both audio and videotaped this evening. And if we can all please stand for the political leaders.
The political leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have parole calls starting on my left. Elizabeth Marcy Voucher.
Gregory Thompson.
Rich Ficero.
Deirdre Mayhew.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent Schools.
Bill Fonseca.
Terry Olajoye, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Kathy Salete, Department Secretary.
Jack Wondan, Student Representative.
Okay, great. We have the approval of some minutes. We have the November 17th, 2014, regular session, meeting minutes.
I move to approve the November 17th, 2014, regular session meeting minutes.
Okay, motion made.
I'll second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
And abstain.
Okay, so we have four and then one extension. Thank you. And then we have the approval of November 12th, Executive Session Meeting Minutes. If we can get a motion for that, please.
I move that we accept the November 12th, 2014, Executive Session Minutes.
Okay, motion made.
Seconded.
And seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
And abstain.
Exactly. Four zero, one extension. Thank you. Okay, we have committee and subcommittee communications. Beth, if you want to start with anything?
E-leaf. Yes. E-leaf is doing Valley Gives on December 10th, so if you're feeling generous, you could do that. And also Willie Ross will, I believe, be doing it too. So that's December 10th. Look up Valley Gives.
Great. Thank you.
Pass tonight. Thank you.
Just two quick items, both athletic. Join Mr. Smith and Mr. Fonseca with the Thanksgiving Day game. It was a nice win. Counts for us.
It does.
And secondly, the Isla Meadow High School Hall of Fame had their annual banquet. They inducted 13 individuals and two teams.
Bill, do everything. Welcome back.
Just to echo, thank you, thank you. Just echo what Rich said. Thanksgiving was a, it was a great day. Keep a thanks to all the people involved in getting the field in playing condition. I mean, it was a yeoman's effort to get to where they got. So, I mean, good time.
Okay. And Jack, do you have anything for us?
And then just besides the Thanksgiving Day football game, today was the first day of winter sports. So it's pretty much going on in high school.
Okay, that sounds great. Nice and easy. At this point, this would be the opportunity for visitors to address the committee.
Yeah.
I know we're here tonight, but say it anyway. And we are moving on. We go down to 6.1, prioritized capital projects for fiscal year 16. So if you just want to start us off with anything, if anyone notices, we have it in our packet.
You have in your packet not only the full capital plan, but also capturing of the lists that were at least generated and discussed somewhat at our last meeting. With that, just a couple responses to some of the questions that were asked. The Maple Shade storage shed, we could probably take that off the list and either rent or purchase one of those storage containers. If we purchase it, obviously then we would be able to paint it and let it blend in a little bit better with the building and place that there.
So we have another option. That's out.
Right. That's, yes, there is another option there, and you could take that out of your prioritized list.
And Mr. Perdott was open to looking at something like that?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I think you're not going to get a climate-controlled storage shed anyway, and so that was probably one of the things that he was thinking about, but...
Did we look at cost of the container?
We did. We're somewhere under $5,000 to purchase.
Forty foot? Twenty foot?
Twenty foot.
Twenty foot. That's enough? A forty footer is probably...
I don't know. We just have the room for a forty foot.
Twenty foot gets...
You have less space to, we're going to try to pop it in by that sidewalk going towards Berchland. But we can...
Are we going to go ahead and do that? Buy it?
I think we'll probably look towards the end of the year to see if we have rental money or supply money that might be left over.
I like the idea of painting it though.
Yeah.
And owning it.
What size was the shed that he had originally wanted?
He had a, I think it was twenty by, may have been twenty by thirty?
It was a good size, huh?
It was decent.
It was a quarter of his size, I suppose.
Yeah. And just, just to ask, if the DPW, do they, they price out what it would cost for the DPW? If they did the labor?
They did, yeah. The DPW probably would lay the slab foundation. I don't know if Bruce gave him a cost on doing it, just a total cinder block shed itself. So I think he's got a price in there with one of those Home Depot or other type of large chain store shed that you can purchase and set up.
Okay.
Okay, so that was one of the questions. The other question was around the high school outer fencing. And we certainly can have a vendor take a look at and price out if you did it in sections. Probably obviously take a little bit longer and maybe cost more in the end. But you'd be able to maybe attack sections for a lesser price, say, at the end of the year as we go end of this school year into the summer. Maybe pick up a section or two depending on what's left either in the maintenance budget or left...
We've got the rental, the rental budget.
We could certainly take, I mean, the high school rental usually offsets athletics. So...
I thought we were saving it for turf.
Oh, you mean the turf rental?
Oh, we haven't, yeah, we haven't touched any of the field rental itself.
Where does that bound, who, who controls that balance?
It's a revolving account that we...
That we have. We don't balance that, Terry?
I don't, if you want to wait a minute, I can probably look at, at least see what it was at the end of the...
Okay.
Well, she looks at it. Can I just ask one more question about the storage shed I'm having issues with, but I'm not? Okay, so we're going down to a twenty by eight foot? And they were looking at a...
Roughly a twenty by thirty.
Twenty by thirty. So it's a thirty the size. And it's costing about $5,000.
And we can price out if we can actually fit it in there. We're talking to a vendor. If they feel they can fit it in and it's not a huge cost jump, maybe we can get the forty foot.
But I'm just looking at the shed and the foundation are for a twenty by thirty for that price. What's the price for a twenty by eight?
It's less than $5,000, he said.
I, I know, but what I'm saying is...
You have priced out, you're talking about building the shed, yeah.
If you reduce the size of the shed to be the same size or similar, maybe even fit in the space better, maybe it would be fifteen by eight or whatever. It, you know, would that get closer to the price?
It's also a question as to whether they can put it into their work.
They do it. Yeah. But what I'm saying is it's not apples to apples now. It's, it's a twenty by thirty compared to a twenty by eight. And I'm just, let's just ask what it might be for something smaller, just as a comparison. Because if it's only going to be a few thousand more in the end, would we rather have a real shed? Or do we, you know, the only thing is the storage unit might be safe, might be more secure. That would be the only advantage, that and the price.
You'll look into that.
All right, all right.
Either way, you'd be taking it off.
It's going to be...
It's going to be more money.
Ten grand plus for any building you build.
But I just be...
We are, we are taking it off, though. I mean, we have to make a decision tonight, correct?
Right. I mean, I think if you went to a smaller version that actually was totally built by Mr. Fenny and his crew, it's going to be less than $20,000.
All right. We could still take it off either way, but I'm just curious.
So wouldn't that be the threshold for capital?
It wouldn't make the threshold for capital. Right.
So take it off.
What I can't guarantee is that he can put it into his...
I know, they're busy.
...summer project work.
Yeah. So Mr. Thompson, the balance in that stadium account at the end of June last year was $19,400.
And we haven't used anything from that yet for any sort of maintenance of the field?
No.
But...
Well, I think we did do a couple walk-off mats or something.
To make sure that we had mats over the track.
But that, that's funded for setup, though, for...
It'd be resurfacing the track.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's what I thought it was for.
I think resurfacing the track is anywhere from four to eight thousand. No, we should get, you think it's more than that?
That's what I'm saying, it's coming up soon, right?
It's more like twenty to thirty.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Just for, because it would just be, no, I think we should get eight years out of it. But just for resurfacing with the red layer?
I, I remember a conversation...
We're certainly not there yet.
Thirty, yeah.
And then redoing eventually, you're supposed to get 12 to 15 years out of your turf. That's going to be a substantial cost.
So just off the subject completely, but we talked about the mats that we put on the track. When we're at, when I'm at games, the kids don't necessarily walk on the mat and then they take off. So I don't know if it's worth roping those mats off so you're forced to walk on the mats as opposed to walking with cleats on the turf. I'm just suggesting that only because you see it all the time. The kids walk on that track. If you want to try to save that, that'd be an easy solution to corral at least across the track. It's a thought.
Do they know how many sections of the fence are in dire need of repair?
We would walk it and make sure that we do the most dire first and...
Well, it's mostly in the back. I'm, you know, I'm trying to...
We have that front piece off the front gate that's hanging. And, but you're right. The back, you have a very jagged-looking fence. Some cases holes and other cases some of the mesh sticking out.
I know. And I know I've mentioned this the last time, and for me, I just feel like, why do the whole fence when there's only small sections of it that need repairing?
Sure.
And that's where I have a hard time doing the whole thing, because I feel it really becomes such a strain or waste of resources and time to replace the whole thing and not just the section.
Yeah, I agree.
But I know, I know where you're coming from, that sometimes you have to do the whole in order to do the parts because of the pricing and I get that.
But we're not going to get that fence. And especially the front, the entrance should be made... You know, the entrance of that field should be appropriate. And it's not right now, you know?
So I know we have to come up with some sort of order. And I think, knowing that I spoke with Bill earlier and my thoughts, I think busing comes to be our, the buses tends to be our number one for everybody.
Yeah, I think so. Do we have information on the buses' mileage and such? Did we get a chance to do that?
We can certainly get that for you. And I think people are interested in possibly looking at the buses.
I was just going to say, we were interested. That should be this week if we can try to do it.
Cause the bus yard, I would certainly be interested in that. Only if we're going to advocate for a certain amount of buses, then I'd like to know what buses were advocating for and what reasons specifically. I know, I mean, I saw, I don't know, bus 16 or whatever it was, was a sub bus for one of my, for my daughters last week. And I saw a big rust patch on the side. I get it. It's, you know, so, such, such an older bus, but just to know...
And that's actually where we're seeing most of our maintenance. We're patching two buses, their stairwell. Patching the stairwell and then redoing the rubberized mats.
That's still not, that's not the answer. You know, when you get to that point, I think we have to act because that's, God forbid, somebody gets hurt. So...
And they do, they get taken out of service when you have, you know, if you have a significant rust patch on the stairs.
And then the kids are on the older bus, and then you find yourself switching kids off to other buses. Doesn't happen a lot, but...
Right.
Safety issue. Right, you got the delay. Okay. So we can safely say bus, we all agree on...
Is what?
For number one, as being a number one priority.
So, but just the threat or the, the issue with that, is buses is number one, is last year we had for school side, $500,000, correct? Is that what we got in capital projects completely? It was a million dollars total, and I think school side got about half.
Right.
Right? So buses at number one is pretty close to wiping us out.
Right.
Relative to last year. I don't know what this year's picture looks like. Hopefully we learn that soon. But just the threat of putting buses at one, the threat is that's all we may get, right? And so that's why maybe, you know, that sixth number may be four, five. I don't know. If we could tweak that so we could get some slack, or I don't know.
Even last year, though, sorry, Bill.
No, go ahead.
We had given them a priority list, and they, they went to one and three. They even chose what they wanted off of that list, so...
I think, I think we don't, I, I wouldn't recommend that this year. I think if we're going to go with a list, then we need to advocate for our list better than perhaps we did last year. Because there's a reason why we put in the list. And I think, you know, certainly some of us at the stable are more knowledgeable about the issues than, and capital maybe. And so we have to make our case that we should really stick to the list.
But if we, you know, we need to know what is the true number of buses that we desperately need at this point. Is it three? Is it five? Is it six? And then go from there.
Right.
It might be, you know, can we come to an agreement of we do three this year and three next year? We have six buses, but we need, definitely need three this year, and we'll need three next year. Can we come to that agreement? To speak to Greg's point, that would lessen the half a million dollars and allow us maybe to get to number two or number three, depending on where we decide.
Exactly.
So I think that's part of our discussion. Maybe we put buses, all six is number one for now.
It's five.
It's five. Okay, it's five.
And then, and then as part of our discussions with capital, to your suggestion, Bill, maybe, maybe two this year or three this year and then two...
And it's not about to stagger them either. I suppose they used to be staggering.
Well, we used to have a rotation.
Makes sense, because then when you have to write, we have to...
But to Terry, your point, you made the point before there was in terms of maintenance and such, that it's good to have the same model buses sometimes as well.
Yes, it is.
So there's, there's pros and cons.
And when they go out for bid on buses, will it make a difference whether you're purchasing two or five?
We would try to join the collaborative's bid. So if they're purchasing a number of buses, then it would make a difference. But our three or two, it's not going to make a difference.
Our numbers don't matter. There's no economy of scale for us for three to five.
There has, there has been some discussion of the collaborative putting together a bus bid. So, you know, they're aware of our needs.
So that, I like that discussion then of maybe breaking it down to years.
And I think we need to know, you know, and it's early in the game, obviously, what is, what is capital going to be? I mean, how much are they willing? I mean, at some point, and I understand the economy's been tough and things have been difficult, but at some point, and this is town-wide, we need to invest, reinvest in the infrastructure or there's going to be major problems down the road. And I get what's been going on the past couple of years. And I'm not trying to be critical in any way, but I think it's time that we really take a long, hard look of how we're going to prioritize to keep the town going.
I wanted, you mentioned that you had a question to answer. How did the high school hot water tank come up with that?
Yes. That's something that Mr. Fenny thinks that he can keep going. He would prefer not to do it right away out of the maintenance budget the way he did Berchland Park. However, he would, he would also ask that we at least keep it on the list, not necessarily as number one or two or three, four, five. But just so that people are aware, he's made both appropriations and capital aware when we made the repair at Berchland with a very large hot water tank. And as you know, Mr. Ficero, one of these tanks gave way at the high school back in 2003, and it shut us down for at least a day. It's about, it's a 350-gallon tank. You have two of them in the boiler room. They're both, to use his term, weeping water at the moment.
So he wants, he would like it, he would like it on the list.
He would like it on the list, but he gets that we would like to not have it in our top five and that we're looking to possibly do it hopefully out of maintenance money if we have maintenance money at the end of the year. What he would not like to do, because he doesn't have the ability to transfer from one account to another, is not to utilize that money right now.
Okay. And I was there for that discussion. We had a discussion. And then I forgot to mention, on another side note, we had a tenants' court meeting, because the courts are done for now. And at the end of our meeting, Bruce and Gordon and I talked about it, to Gordon's point, patch it now, keep it on the list. If there's money at the end of the year, potentially we could use it. If not, it's got to be funded through capital, so...
If one of them does have a big issue, okay, and say it's not quite the end of the year, but there might be enough money, can we like take one down and out of service and keep the other one up and then just fix them come the summer?
So Bruce addressed the issue, and Gordon, correct me if I'm wrong, but if there is an issue this year prior to the end of the fiscal year, then we can do a, we can request a reserve fund transfer.
We would have to act. If you have a major issue this year, you have to act.
But you can't work on just one hot water heater.
For the school.
Not as far as I understand how they've set it up.
So that's kind of a wait and see. So that should go on the list. I would, well, I would say let's do the rest of the list and then stick it in somewhere.
Right, we got to keep it on the list.
Yeah.
So then my other thought was, and again, I know that this is going to, is maybe the Mountain View bathroom project. We've had this, of putting that as number two.
I'm not in favor of that.
I know that.
I'm not either, but it's a code thing.
But it's for me...
It's not a code thing.
That's what we've been told.
It is a code thing.
It is a code thing.
It's not being...
I think if we, if we, if we never touched it, we would never have to touch it.
We're under, we're under grandfather right now.
We are.
We are under grandfather clause right now, but...
Oh, I haven't heard this one.
Because I thought you had to...
Because if you don't touch it, if you touch that classroom, you have to upgrade. We are under a grandfather. That was made. That was clearly stipulated a couple of years ago, but because this project itself has been on there for a number of years.
Well, so Fenny ADA compliance is if you touch it, then you're in trouble, right?
What?
I thought it was a code.
Yeah, it's, yeah, these two are...
It's a health code.
It's a health code.
I thought it was a health code right now.
It's a health code. But it's not, it's a different type of, you know, violation. It's not where they're going to shut us down. So...
Plus, in reality, kids aren't going to ever use the hot water. It's never going to happen. Go into the bathroom after every one of your kids comes out of the bathroom and see how hot that water is.
Then why are we going to do the hot water tank at the high school?
Well, that's the difference.
You need hot water. You need hot water. That's for the cleaning, isn't it?
I, I want to do, I think it's appalling going to have hot water in Mountain View. I think it's appalling. We don't have hot water there.
Well, it is, but...
I'm sorry. I do.
But there's plenty of appalling things in our district, right? Pick your battle.
Did you go out there? Did you survive?
The fact that it's been on here for so many...
I made it.
The fact that it's been on here for so many years tells me it, no matter where we put it, it's not going to get done.
I don't see that.
Well, I don't want to be negative, but it's not a priority. It's not going to become, unless it was a serious code violation where it be, and then they're going to look at us saying, well, why isn't it number one? Because they've said it before. We've pitched this...
They did have it number two last year.
I know we had it number two last year. And a comment's been made, why isn't it number one? When we plead our case...
Because we got to get the kids to school safely first.
But because there's always something else. There's, and, you know, I agree with that. But it has been on our capital plan for quite a number of years, and it's still sitting there. I think everybody should have hot water too, but I think there's other priorities at this point. I really do.
So the Mountain View, just jumping to another one, Mountain View interior office renovation, that is to, that's, that's the one we talked about flipping the office. Okay. And then, but the Meadowbrook is not. That's something different.
No, no, it's, it's similar. It's similar. Both buildings are set up in a way where your front office does not actually see directly the front door.
But our Meadow...
And so that's a recommendation that if you're going to renovate, you should renovate the building so that you actually take into account that you want your front office to see the front door.
And I get that completely. But the, but the Meadowbrook is exterior renovation.
I thought that was the windows.
I'm sorry. Yeah. Meadowbrook has an interior renovation on there. It's just not up for F16.
It's the Meadowbrook, and as much as I would like to see the interior office switched about, I, I do think the situation with the new TV sets is much better. I mean, it was ridiculous before. It was like, why bother?
Right.
Although I do think it's something that we need to address if we do even a big, something where these all have to be done with all of our schools and approach it that way. But with the exterior renovations, is it just the windows or does it include the ancient doors?
It's windows and doors.
Okay.
That's, that's a full renovation of windows and doors throughout the building because they're all original.
Those doors are sticky. I mean, they are difficult.
Well, they're the original doors.
They are. So... See, I was more inclined for the Meadowbrook external.
We're now beginning to get it. $1.8 million is never going to happen.
Yeah.
I don't think the total town capital budget is going to be $1.8 million. Maybe it will. Maybe we'll find out differently at our meeting that's coming up, but I don't know that it's going to happen. I'm just, you have to be realistic to an extent, too.
Oh, I know.
That we, we should only ask for things we think we can get.
But the other thing is they need to know what the urgency is. So you got to balance it.
So part of our discussion has to be, these are pressing issues. We need to fund these at some sort of level. And if it's not out of our operating budget, meaning an annual town meeting and capital project, then we have to figure out how else to run funds. And I don't know what that is going to be.
Right.
Well, fortunately, it's dead exclusion, I think.
It may be.
For something that large.
Maybe that issue specifically, we should talk to capital and appropriations about potential dead exclusion for that because that's a significant renovation. It's close to $2 million.
Is it muddying it to add, you know, the interior office to that, the exterior for that?
No, if you're going to do it, if you're going to do it, do the whole thing.
Well, that's the thing. We know we're not going to be looking at new buildings for those two schools for many years.
No.
But we need to do something to at least sustain them to continue as a viable building.
So that goes back to what you had to say before.
So now coming back to our list, do we look at things like the furniture or the placecapes?
Yeah. I think so. Direct impact on learning.
But we need to have the conversation about...
Furniture is a direct impact on learning.
It is.
And that's the business we're in. As long as the roofs aren't leaking and the windows aren't leaking, I think we should start spending some money on the classrooms because the classrooms look the same way they did when I was there.
But we can't lose sight of all the other projects. And, you know, I don't, I don't know how many times, because we don't know where we are in this, the high school project with MSBA. How many times can we go back to the town for dead exclusion? I mean, we've got to balance everything.
I think it's going to have to happen soon because as we all know, all five of our buildings are aging. Certainly Berchland is in the best shape because it's relatively new. But the rest of them are aging beyond aging. So at some point, we're going to have to spend some serious money above and beyond just an annual capital allocation. We're going to have to look at some sort of dead exclusion and some short-term and long-term planning. And so I think we get through the high school idea here and see where we're at after we hear from MSBA and then, or MSB, what is that?
MSBA, right.
And then we start to talk about how we're going to address some of these major issues in the buildings like this. $2 million, I think, is, is worthy of a discussion of the town. Is the town in favor of improving our buildings? Because this is $2 million in the renovations. Is the town in favor of moving the offices? You know? Because it's big money. And it's going to cost everyone. So, yeah. I think for today, our discussion should be around what is feasible within, you know, $500 to $1 million. I think we have to look at $500 to $1 million and, and, and put as much as we can into that sort of numbers and then see what capital has to be funding.
Because we don't know what other departments are even, we have no idea what's...
Right. We haven't spent a lot in capital over the years. We haven't gone out for, for bonding in years. And so I know a lot of the town is, is going to be looking for a long list. It's inevitable.
It's common. And I think everybody realizes it's...
All right. Now that we got that figured out.
Okay, so, I was just going to say, if you want to say something?
Yeah, if you could look at the list I have for Rich, and I know that, so we have buses number one.
Right.
High school hot water tank would go last on my list. Then I would continue with everything there, eliminating the fencing and the shed. So it would be buses, Mountain View bathroom project, Maple Shade classroom furniture, high school classroom furniture, high school hot water tank, high school stadium bleachers. I know the one contentious one is the second one, which is the bathroom project. But we can move that up and down depending on how people feel.
Well, and my, my question also would be the high school classroom furniture.
That's on there?
Yeah.
Oh, right.
Yeah, well, I...
Because if it's, if it's a part of a complete project, high school project, subject to 50% reimbursement.
Right, why put that in there?
Got you, okay. That can move with you, though.
Yeah, but it can move.
That can move with you.
Right.
It'll just lessen...
Well, but it's going to cost us $30,000 more if we buy it now versus with the new building.
And I know that's just...
It's going to get reimbursed for, yeah.
Right, and it's... Now, when it comes to, and I'm just asking, so Maple Shade wants new classroom furniture, but Mountain View doesn't. But it's essentially the same furniture?
Well, Mountain View has looked at, they have their hot water project that's been on for eight years. They're also trying to update their playground equipment, which has been on at least five, if not longer. So they've centered in on that. And then they've added as, from the facility study, things like the interior renovation and fire suppression system as you continue out.
I guess I feel that if furniture is essential for learning and one school's getting it and another one's not because they need to wash their hands without the hot water they'll ever use, I mean, where is the, I guess I'm trying to, is that fair to the kids at Mountain View? The kids at Maple Shade are getting new furniture. And, I mean, I don't know.
Well, but it's not...
I know they're not asking, but right now, but it's...
The building principal that's coming up with, right?
And again, it goes back to that water, the, the hot water project's been here for forever. So...
Were the place structures originally paid for by the school's budget?
It was long before.
Yeah, I know. I was just curious when I was there.
I bet you when they built the school, they were there. Yeah.
See, but back then, there wasn't the coating that there is now. So, I mean, you could put up a place structure and it was okay if you fell.
Right. And you had rocks underneath it, like the...
Now, if it's over two feet, you need six 12 inches of, you know, sawdust to catch the fall. So it's just more expensive.
Because I know, as much as we try to fight for that every year, they ask us, can the PTO raise the money? And I just...
Well, that's, I think, yeah. Well...
At some point, we say, no, they can't. We have to fund it as a town, and we, we find value in it. We find educational value in it and safety value in it. And no, so we need to ask for funding from the town.
Well, because our PTO is paying for some of our curriculum. Well, they can't do everything. They're helping us with some getting books and the, and literacy closets and such into our schools. They can't be putting in playgrounds. So, I mean, we're asking a lot of, you know, a few volunteers, too.
Well, Rich, I do like, I like your idea of what you came up with and your list.
I liberated high school classroom furniture, cause that, that, the point was wrong made by Mr. Thompson.
And I have a hard time prioritizing fourteen items, cause I feel really, like Greg, you were saying, what's the feasibility financially for all of these? That even if, can we come up with five?
I think we prioritize them all. We've already submitted them as a list.
Oh, that's true.
So, we prioritize them all.
Well, we can take. I don't think you wanna send a message that, uh, you know, these have no longer become needs. You've asked us to prioritize. We're trying to live within the guidelines that the capital planning committee is giving us. However, with that said, we want you to know that these needs aren't going away.
Because somebody will bring it up about, they'll pull out their books and somebody will bring it up going, well, this is a pri, was a priority last year. Why isn't it on, on this year's list? Knowing full well, we're not gonna get.
Water tanks break and you gotta fix them.
No, but knowing full well, we're not gonna get, you know, five million dollars for our capital projects.
Well, we can start with number one buses.
Okay, so, so are we prioritizing this whole list in front of us or just a, a abbreviated list?
Well, when is the prioritize list due? I know we asked this the last time and I can't recall.
Yeah, basically, I, I said over the next two meetings, and the first meeting was our last one. This is the second meeting, that I said we would try to get them a prioritize list. I mean, I certainly can ask for more time.
No, because, what, Rich? You know, because we'll have the same discussion in two weeks.
Right, no, no, that's fine.
It's not gonna change.
All right, so we have buses number one. Are we okay with Mountain View, uh, hot water?
Listen, as I become older in my years, I'm starting to just be brutally honest. I would recommend the Maple Shade classroom furniture as the second one, but I, I'm certainly, you know, one of five, so I, you know, I.
Yeah, but if we don't get this stupid water thing out, Mountain View's never gonna get furniture.
Yeah, but I just don't think, you know, I'm gonna be realistic. Are they gonna even look at it again? It's been there for so long. I mean, I, I, it's gotta be there.
I, I would think that they would entertain it, given that they've asked us to scale it back. So, every year, Mr. Fenny looks to do just the bare minimum. Um, cause I think the original project was well over a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars, and now we've gotten it down to sixty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy.
Well, I'll put that to a vote. Number two.
I move that we prioritize number two on our capital planning project list as the Mountain View bathroom project.
Okay, motion made.
I'll second.
And seconded. Okay, um, all those in favor, please say aye. Really didn't hear you. Okay, all those opposed, please say nay. Nay, that still carries forward three to two.
I'm gonna move for Maple Shade classroom furniture to be item number three on our capital project planning list.
Motion made.
I'll second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? And all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. It was, uh, number three is the Maple Shade classroom furniture, and that carries forward five zero.
I move that we move the Mountain, Mountain View playscape outside equipment replacement as item number four.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing all those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, that carries forward five zero. So, that was the.
Mountain View playscape.
Mountain View playscape. Okay, you got this right. Okay. You threw that one at me. You threw that one at me. I thought you were gonna.
I move, I'm gonna go the opposite now. I move that the last six items on the list, beginning with classroom, high school classroom furniture, through high school hot water tanks, the last items with one exception, the hot water tanks be first, and the high school classroom furniture moved down, so on.
Well, we have others.
I, I, I was going the opposite way. I'm trying to move.
Well, the only one that I would, I would, might bring up though is the bleachers.
Bleachers, okay.
Only be, because those are gonna stay no matter what. I mean, that's just now. So, what else is left? Uh, interior, Mountain View interior office.
Two base swing sets for Maple Shade, exterior for Meadowbrook.
Bleachers are roughly seventy-six thousand.
It's gotta, it's gotta happen.
It's gotta happen. They poured the pad for it when they built the place.
So, what are you just saying? Then leave everything?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'll take Greg's point. I'll move for item number five, the high school stadium bleachers on the visitor's side. Number five.
Oh, I like that one. Okay. Motion made and seconded by Greg. Any further discussion on that one? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, that still carries forward four to one.
Item number six, the high school hot water tanks.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. And that carries forward five to zero. That's the hot water tank.
So, that's six.
Just catch up over here. All right, should we put in the, should we do the Maple Shade? Swing set and then the interior and exterior after that?
Sure.
Maple Shade would be seven.
Maple Shade swing set, Mountain View interior. And Maple Shade exterior, I mean Meadowbrook exterior. I'll move for those three.
Okay, motion made.
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Any further discussion on those three? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, that carries forward five zero. Miss Lenny, did you get all that by the way?
I'll do the same. I'll say number ten, high school classroom furniture. Number eleven, the high school electrical service upgrade, and number twelve, the high school new master clock system.
Okay, motions made. And seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, that carries forward five zero.
So, that was high school classroom furniture, ten, uh, high school electrical upgrade, eleven, and twelve was master clock.
All right, do we need to just run through it one more time? I'll just read it all. Are you okay with it? We'll make sure we all agree. So, for, um, number one, we have the bus renewal. We have the Mountain View bathroom project as number two. Number three is the Maple Shade classroom furniture. Number four is the Mountain View playscape. Number five, the high school bleachers. Number six is the high school water tank. Number seven, Maple Shade swing set. And did it eight is the exterior Meadowbrook exterior? Did I get that right? Is Mountain View exterior, and then nine would be the Meadowbrook exterior, sorry, internal and external. Number ten is high school classroom furniture, eleven is a high school electrical service upgrade, and twelve is high school new master clock system. So, we have that priority list down.
So, just, I like the list, because we get to Maple Shade swing set for six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, which is not out of the realm of. Which is a great. Six seventy-eight to get us. That's with four twenty-five for buses.
And that, you know, that could be the.
If we do two buses actually.
Yeah, depending on where we are.
Yeah, if we're able to drop one or two.
How many buses total do we have again?
Twenty-one. In there though, you have at least three smaller buses. And then a number of three spares that are used somewhat regularly. Sixteen from the school?
Okay, so we can cross that one off our list for tonight. All right, so we're gonna move on to our new business. We have seven point one, overview of budget development timeline.
Okay, uh, in your packets, similar to years past, I've put together an outline of, um, the budget development process. Really, we've already begun it. Some of the discussion we were just having will certainly impact our budget for next year with all the capital planning. We've also started some professional development with the leadership team around, um, best practices and using student activity accounts to support students each year. And then tomorrow evening, with appropriations, uh, really kicks off the formal, if you will, budget development process for FY sixteen. They'll be hosting a meeting for all town departments at six thirty at the Council on Aging. And, um, most of the meetings here are, are regular meetings for school committee, with the exception of the one that you see um, on January twelfth that says it's an added meeting. The reason being is that, um, the appropriations committee would like to have all departments submit a preliminary budget by the thirteenth of January, and, um, they do understand, we certainly can reiterate or ask the question tomorrow that we will not, as a committee, have voted on the final budget, which makes sense, because our discussions with them often changes what our budget looks like. To, to vote in a, a budget on the twelfth and then have it change any number of times between the twelfth of January and town meeting, doesn't make a lot of sense. But they would like to see, um, where the major numbers, if you will, in our budget are on the, by the twelfth. Which does make Mrs. Olajara very anxious as she sits there.
January twelfth, I have a scheduling conflict in that day. Can we meet at a different time, seven o'clock?
The, the only item on that meeting would be budget, so, um, certainly, and it's not a full presentation with the entire leadership team. It's really simply, here's where we think the major numbers are. Where are all your salary accounts? Where do we think, uh, some of our other major accounts for the operational budget will be as we look at the fiscal year sixteen?
Are we expecting additional information from the fifth to the twelfth? Is that why we have the extra meeting?
I was just to give you, well, yeah, I mean, we would, yeah, we would have a chance to. Trying to put that all together for the twelfth is a, is a pretty monumental task. So, that's why the fifth is stated as an update, and the twelfth would probably be a little bit more detailed.
What time, Rich?
I, I have to be in a meeting at six thirty in downtown Spring, A.S.O.N. Meadow, so I mean. So, I mean, anytime before, I mean, we, we probably usually have it at an hour, I would think, to be safe. Anytime. Five would work fine.
I could do that on that date. I just looked at my calendar. It's January twelfth?
Yeah, January twelfth.
I would appreciate that if it's possible.
Yeah, no, that works for me.
Yeah, twelve, that's fine.
Five P.M.? Terry would like it to be five P.M., March.
Now, I have a quick question, go, just going back to when the appropriations meets, um, a budget development with the leadership team. Leadership team, do they meet with appropriations directly?
No, that's, uh, what, this week, once we have the meeting with appropriations on the fourth, which is our regularly, regularly scheduled leadership team meeting, we'll go over what the appropriations committee has outlined as parameters. And that may change how we look at the whole budget development process. I'm hoping it won't, and I certainly think that we should, as we have every year, um, identify our key needs to keep our students moving forward. But, you know, if the parameters are as strict as last year, it probably, I wouldn't put them through as many meetings, um, to identify those, knowing that, uh, with last year's parameters, a one percent increase to our budget really becomes a cut. And so, we reduced by about four hundred and forty-six thousand last year between January and the May town meeting. All of you were a part of that.
Those meetings are similar for the journey. That's, that's just kind of template. You'll, you'll be creative as much as you need to be, depending on appropriations committee says.
Right, yeah. That's, yeah, well, I'll give them possibly a revised version of this for their meetings if appropriations were to stick with last year's parameters. I'm hoping that they won't. I'm cautiously optimistic. So, and I think appropriations does, uh, a very good job, and they understand that last year was tough on all departments.
Thank you for that authorization.
I always try to be flexible this time of the year anyway, when it leads up to budget times. I know we always end up.
That's our next big, that's our next big.
The big meeting with appropriations for us is on the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth of February.
And they'll probably schedule more. Uh, it's generally six thirty, yeah. I would assume that's gonna be at the Council on Aging, but I, I don't know that for a fact yet. Although, if we don't give them something on the thirteenth, I'm sure they'll be calling at the end of the day on the thirteenth.
Our dates set soon.
One of the things that, um, I know that they're very aware of is that, um, the governor's budget does not come out till the end of January anyway. So, it changes your discussion depending on, and now we'll have a new governor. It, it really does change the discussion considerably. So, uh, they, they are aware of that.
So, we're gonna move on. Uh, we have two, two items up, seven point two.
Oh, showtime.
Which is, that's right, we're gonna hand the table over now to Mr. Gofon Seg. We're gonna have overview of the LPVC agreement with member districts.
There is a draft.
Well, no, that's been, that has been.
Has been approved?
It's been approved by the board, so it's no longer a draft form. Just a quick overview, um, collaboratives were formed in the mid nineteen seventies, and in nineteen eighty-nine, the first collaborative agreement was drafted and approved by member district school committees. Since the legislation that was passed two years ago governing collaboratives specifically, they gave the power to the DESC. The DESC instructed all the executive directors of the collaboratives to reformulate and redraft the draft agreement from nineteen eighty-nine. What you have in front of you is the dra, is the, a copy of the collaborative agreement that has been approved by the LPVEC Board of Directors and by the DESC. The process now involves Andy Churchill, Executive Director of the LPVEC, to visit the seven member district school committees, seeking their formal approval of this collaborative agreement. It's kinda backwards, and we've already questioned the DESC on it, because the board was required to approve this in a first reading and a second reading, which has occurred over the last two meetings. Now, it goes forward to school committees for their approval. It doesn't change anything. As a matter of fact, this is pretty close to the agreement from nineteen eighty-nine. It stipulates our responsibilities. It stipulates what the collaborative will pay, what will provide us in return for the assessments that we pay. Primarily, it started out as special education and has morphed into the career tech. Vocational end of where, what they provide to all seven member school districts. There's no financial implications on this whatsoever. It's just memorializing what services the collaborative provides to us and our responsibilities as a member district.
So, we will, um, look to schedule Andy Churchill either at our next meeting or the meeting following, uh, our next meeting, so that he, he would come and, um, do a quick synopsis of this, uh, answer any questions you may have, and then, um, hopefully have a vote of our committee to agree to the collaborative agreement.
Mr. Gofon Seg, you're on the Board of Development, am I correct?
Yes.
Or the Board of Governors.
It's the Board of Directors now.
So, you've already formally approved this?
Yes. And like I said, I've read. Yeah. And like I said, this, I read both through this one and the one that was passed in nineteen eighty-nine, and there ain't a whole lot of changes. Because their mission hasn't changed, the services they provide have only expanded to, you know, special education primarily because of... If you get somebody that requires a lot of services that districts can't handle, it's easier to allow the collaborative to do what they do best. And, you know, as far as the career tech, that's just an expanding field. Because school districts can't offer those type of alternative trainings for students. So we have a number of students that attend here half-day and go over to career tech in either the AM or PM, and it's working out great.
Wait for that one.
So Andy Churchill will be visiting.
Right.
Yes.
We're gonna invite him hopefully for the December fifteenth meeting. If he's not already booked by one of the other committees.
He has started going around, I believe he's hit West Springfield and Ludlow.
Okay.
So he is out there.
Great. All right, so we have seven point three, which is MASC conference update. So you ready for your nice slideshow presentation? And again, continuing, Bill Fonseca, if you'd like to, just give us your update prior to your meeting.
Again, it was a very informative conference, I mean, they had, they're doing a better job. And it stems from the national conference, when they see some of these speakers that speak in breakout sessions on the national level, they get them to come to our conference. And the same, that's what happened again this year, so they're... They were able to bring in, and even the breakout sessions, were just a wide array of diversity. The first thing that I will say, and after, you know, it took a while, the delegate assembly went almost two and a half hours. All the resolutions were passed. There was lengthy discussion, especially in number two, Greg, where you had some serious issues. Those, I brought those issues up. The echo in the, in the delegate assembly was along the same lines. But, you know, when you bring together three hundred and fifty people, there were, you know, obviously conflicting viewpoints, and it was all nine, all seven resolutions passed. But there was lengthy debate, and, you know, sometimes it's repetitive, but it was... I mean, it was good discussion, don't get me wrong, but they did all pass.
It was pretty lengthy.
Yeah.
I escaped.
That's just bad.
I went to less testing, more learning, I think.
But it started at three o'clock and it ended somewhere close to five-thirty.
But at the beginning, our own, very own, Mr. Bill Fonseca was nominated and voted in as a lifetime member, the Massachusetts Association School Committee member, so you were, it's a forever pal.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I...
So are you forced to pay dues every year, that's what you wanted to know?
No.
No.
And did you get some sort of PIN or plaque?
I do have a plaque, and unfortunately, it's sitting on my computer desk at home.
Actually, it was quite the honor. Not only was the nomination done at the delegate assembly, but then the end of the conference or the end of the week, Friday night, there was a dinner, and Mr. Fonseca was one of the honorees. And Jake Olivera, who is a school committee member in Ludlow, presented him and talked to the many years of service that Mr. Fonseca has given our school committee, but also the collaborative and MASC in general. It was pretty impressive.
Yeah, it was, you know, I thank everybody for their support, you know, I really do, because it's quite, it was quite an honor, and it was, you know, with everything that's happened, it was overwhelming to say the least.
Congratulations, we're happy for you.
Thank you, thank you very much. As I said, and real quick, and Gordon and Beth jump in anywhere you want, author Doug Stone was a general session speaker on Thursday. His, his topic was feedback and how you receive it, how you perceive it, and how you react to it. Very informative, he actually involves, he's one of these guys that walks up and down with a wireless mic and actually involves the people attending the general session, which makes it a whole lot better.
He actually is the author of Difficult Conversations.
Oh, okay, that's what he did, yeah.
Presentation last year, and so this is actually his, sort of his sequel, if you will. How do you deal with feedback in a positive way regardless of whether it's on the mark, maybe a little bit off the mark, from what constituency you're receiving the feedback, and then use it to go in a positive direction?
Friday's general speaker was coach Herman Bloom, and this goes back to... He was a high school football coach in nineteen seventy-one in Alexandria, Virginia.
That was the movie.
That was the movie starring Denzel Washington. And he spoke of how everybody has to come together with a common goal, to work towards that common goal. He, he's now retired, but he continues to go on a speaking tour, motivating and inspiring audiences with presentations on how to respect, work as a team, involve the community, and the importance of character. I mean, it was quite a moving speech.
Yeah, he was, he was phenomenal.
And it was, and it was kind of ironic, because we went to a luncheon that afternoon, and they announced that his daughter had died the night before, and he still attended. Because he, when he left, he was gonna stay and sign autographs and talk to everybody, and he went out a side door, and nobody could figure out why, and it was really... That really moved everybody at this luncheon, so it was quite... He was quite a powerful speaker in what he went through. There was a short video prior to him coming out, and it was, it really hit home on what his message was. So that was one of the better speakers that I've ever seen.
Yeah.
At the conference, so, I mean, kudos to MASC and MASSS for getting somebody like him. Also, I mean, we attended a number of breakout sessions, I won't bore you with all the...
And he was a teacher too.
Yeah.
You know, he wasn't just a coach, he was a teacher, so we saw both sides of what we deal with.
You did say you have to change with the times, you may not be able to use his same techniques today. That he used back then.
I won't bore you with all the breakout sessions we went to, but one of the more interesting ones we went to was called blogging and tweeting, and how districts are using Twitter to get the message out. Positive showcase for the good that's going on in all of our schools.
Right.
It's something that Gordon and I, Gordon and I talked briefly at the conference, something we're gonna look into doing. It wouldn't be something like the regular Twitter, and I don't know that much about Twitter, where you could get feedback, it would be just something that we posted, but there wouldn't be any opportunity for anybody to feed, give feedback through it.
Right.
So that was one of the, the more...
Now, high schools are later than that, isn't it?
They do a lot of it.
They do a lot of it. So what we're gonna do is do it on a district level.
Right. It'd be opening up a district-level Twitter account, and one of the messages that they've talked about was, regardless of what social media you use, try to anchor people back to a main source of information. So you would highlight it on your district webpage. So, you know, whether they're following you on Twitter or not, people might be able to see the recent tweets on the district webpage, then they would also hopefully go to other areas of the district webpage. And if we liven up some of the information that we're discussing at school committee, we can maybe get people coming to school committee meetings as well, in terms of we're advertising on the district webpage, we're tweeting out certain things the district's doing. It's how to connect with the different constituencies that you have in your town, but focus them toward one main source of information, even though you're maybe using a few.
I like that, I'll definitely be on board for that.
I may have to pull Jack in this.
There you go, I know Twitter very well.
All right. In the middle of my notes, I have to say, they were presenting all these great ideas, how you funnel them, and then it says, all right, how do you tweet? We never got there. Never got to...
It wasn't, they had talked about, they had, because somebody stood up and said, okay, how do you, how do you tweet?
How do you open an account?
Yeah, and they never, because there were so many, and the questions were very, very good, and they were all, you know, timely and everything else, they never got to how they set it up.
That's where your high school students come in.
It's easy, don't worry. We have to draft you and get the right hashtag.
See your little name and you're gonna go.
Yeah. We attended, like I said, we attended a number of, a number of breakout sessions. One of the other ones was understanding school budgets and fiduciary responsibilities. And we're up to par on what they, you know, what they were presenting. About, because we're, we're a very transparent committee, we don't... There's, you know, it's amazing to sit in these rooms and listen to some of the practices that some of these districts do, and you look at each other going, we would get shocked if we ever thought about that.
Yeah, we would.
So, I mean, it was, like I said, it was very informative. A lot of it was around, there were a number of sessions about social media, because that's, that whole thing is really starting to explode. And a lot of budgets and strategies for involving more community involvement, that was another powerful theme. So, I mean, we're right there, but, you know, I think we can, I personally think we can do a better job of getting the community involved in what we're doing. So these are things that we'll work on based on what we learned from the conference. If anybody wants to, I mean, every breakout session on the MASC, on the MASC website, all the breakout sessions, they do now have digital handouts that are on their website, so it's all available.
And anyone can access them.
Anyone can access that.
I wanted to mention one that I went to, it was called Less Testing, More Learning.
All right.
And there's a big push...
Do you agree with that, Beth? I'm not sure.
No, no, it's funny, because I, I was playing devil's advocate at this. They're like, they're testing the kids too much, and they do this, and they do that, and I'm sitting there, I'm like, guys... You know, I had to say, I'm gonna play devil's advocate here, we're the best in the nation, and is it because we're over-testing our children? Is there anything wrong about teaching them the information? It's all good information. Explained how one of our students just recently moved to Florida, he was a C student in honors classes, he is there... He's like the angel there now, because he's straight A's, and he's in their honors classes, and he's like saying to his parents, you gotta get my sister into a private school, or she's gonna be dumb as a stump. I mean, so is there a reason why we're testing our kids? So I am, I'm fair with that, and just to tie into it, I got a call from Chip Parington, who's a school committee member in Ludlow, saying that evidently there's a local group that's trying to get a ballot question on asking parents certain questions about whether or not they, what do they think about testing, or if they want to change over from Park to... Just, just non-binding kind of a thing, and he wanted me to involve all of us, and I said, well, let's see how this evolves. So I'm on their email thread right now, hearing all kinds of stuff, and if I feel it's something, or if you guys are interested, just let me know, and we'll go on with... But it's an interesting concept, that there, it's a lot of money and time, and our, you know... So that was a hairy group, but it was...
Yeah, I had looked at that one, but unfortunately, it conflicted with the delegate assembly.
Yeah.
Because that, that one did look extremely...
Yeah.
And these, I mean, you go into these breakout sessions, and it's standing room only, it's, you know, there are some really hot... They do a good job of getting, capturing the hot button topics, so... But it was, you know, again, it was a very good conference.
Good, good, thank you for that. Okay, and as we're just concluding here, I just wanna thank you, Jack, for being here again with us this evening.
Absolutely.
It's always fun to have that. Mr. Mackey, thank you for being here.
It was a good time to call you down to be my Twitter coach.
And if there's nothing else, we just need a motion to adjourn unless we all wanna...
So moved.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Yep, and that carries forward five zero. So that, and with that, everyone have a great evening. Thank you.
Good work tonight.